Welcome to our Parkway Board meeting. Would you please stand with us and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin tonight with some special recognitions. It's an exciting time of year for us this evening. We'll be recognizing an outstanding group of Parkway students. We're honoring 50 students who have demonstrated outstanding academic achievement in the National Merit Scholarship Program and six students from the Stars Program. First, I'd like to invite Dr. Desi Kershawfer, our Deputy Superintendent, to begin the recognition of our National Merit Students.
Good evening, President Jacob. My presence-
So, Artino, distinguished members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty, the Secretary Stover. Fifty Parkway students have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, an independent, non-for-profit organization that conducts competitions for recognition and college undergraduate scholarships through two programs, the National Merit Scholarship Program and the National Achievement Scholarship Program. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an annual academic competition which identifies seniors who represent the top of their graduating class. Commended students place among the top 5 percent of more than 1.5 million students who entered the competition by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. More than 1.5 million juniors in over 22,000 high schools entered the National Merit Program by taking the SAT Qualifying Test, which served as the initial screener. 16,000 students, representing less than 1 percent of U.S. high school seniors, qualified as National Merit semifinalists. Twenty-six Parkway students earned National Merit semifinalist status and an additional 24 students are recognized as commended. National Merit semifinalists have an opportunity to qualify for nearly 8,300 Merit Scholarship Awards worth $32 million that will be offered next spring. Some students were unable to join us this evening for the recognition, but we will still announce their names. Now, please join me in welcoming Principal Tim McCarthy from Central High, who will recognize his students. Mr. McCarthy.
I appreciate that from the Central High section. Thank you. Good evening to the Board and on behalf of all of the principals and the school communities. I would just want to extend a thank you to just every year you as a board making an effort to recognize our students, and this is certainly one of those very exciting evenings and proud evenings for us as high school principals. There's a lot of brain power in the room tonight, for sure, but I think even more importantly, on a daily basis, when you get to see their enthusiasm for learning, that's what's really exciting. So, thank you for taking the time to recognize them. Students, as we call your name, you'll want to come up and shake hands, starting with Dr. Marty, and then move down to the board to your left, and then each school group will gather over in the gray carpeted area for a picture at the end. So, I'm going to start with the students that are here this evening, so on behalf of Central High students who earn the status of National Merit semifinalist, Anthony Chen. And these students earned the status of commended per the National Merit Group, and these students are with us this evening, Joshua Farcus. Central High students who could not join us this evening, but we do want to recognize them. Additional semifinalists are Amy Ahn, Daniel Berkovich, Claire Wang, Emily Kang, Jessica Sun, and Clarinda Tan. Students who were recognized as commended are Joshua Adams, Sourdeep Ghosh, and Elena Willner. So, congratulations to those students. Now, it is my honor to introduce my esteemed colleague from the North Area, Dr. Jenny Markward.
Good evening, everyone, and as they're taking the picture, I just want to add that while I don't know all of the students from the other schools, I can speak on behalf of the North High students and I'm sure all of those students from the other schools, that these students are not only exceptional academicians, but they are exceptional in character and very exceptional leaders and involved in extracurricular activities. So, congratulations to all of you on all of your honors. And so, tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize the North High National Merit Scholars. Our semifinalists here tonight are Jillian Daye. Unfortunately, Aditya Gokhale could not be with us this evening. Our National Merit commended students with us tonight, Claire Maher. And Sean Harrigan could not be with us this evening, but we want to congratulate him as And so, at this time, I would like to please introduce Dr. Patrice H., the principal at South High.
Okay, you know, when I think of our students that you'll be introduced to tonight and what to say, you know, they're fabulous in so many ways, better than any infomercial that I've seen. They slice, they dice, they run faster, jump higher. So, really what we're proud of with our students is they are good people, and I am so proud to introduce them to you tonight. So, starting off with our semifinalists, we have Elise Duffy. And our South High commended student, Vasu Ganesh. And now, I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Beth Mitten-Dorf, Assistant Principal at West High School.
Excuse me while I move this up a little bit. I want to reiterate what all of the other principals said, how proud we are of these students. I have the additional privilege of serving as the grade level principal for these seniors for the last four years, so you guys hold a special place in my heart. You exhibit an extreme amount of character and patience and perseverance, and you just love learning, which is going to take you far in this world, so we're really proud of you. I would like to start with our semifinalists, Peter Pedev. And Rose Ho, who I don't believe was able to make it tonight. And we have a long list of commended students, Leah Egan. Connor Brunig. Aditya Booty. Erin Dorance. Caroline Gabriel. George Lu. Kaylee Riggs. And Chiron Robinson. And on behalf of all the principals, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the parents of the National Merit semifinalists and commended students. We know that you play an essential role in their growth and achievement. Thank you so much for all of your support, and you deserve to be honored tonight as well.
So, sort of an unauthorized or off-the-agenda recognition, Beth Mitten-Dorf, Dr. Beth Mitten-Dorf actually was recognized this year as the Missouri State Assistant Principal of the Year, so I'd like to give her a round of applause. So, this is always a humbling night to hear the achievements of some of our students and some of the great accomplishments they make, and will continue down that path. Matter of fact, the next group of students, not only do I struggle with the depth and understanding of the research they perform in their program, I have a really hard time just reading the titles. So, I'd like to welcome Dr. Ken Mars, Stars Program Director, to present the winners of the Award for Excellence in Research in the Students and Teachers as Research Science Program at the University of Missouri-St. Louis. Dr. Mars.
Thank you very much. Before recognizing six outstanding Parkway School District students, I'd like to tell you something about the 2016 Stars Program. The Stars Program enables outstanding, rising senior students who show significant promise in science to attend an area research institution for six weeks. The students conduct research with outstanding faculty in a one-to-one environment. Classes and research are conducted using the facilities of the Cortech Innovation Community, the Donald Danforth Plant Science Center, St. Louis University, Washington University, and the host institution, the University of Missouri-St. Louis. The laboratory research is augmented by seminars presented by noted scientists from the St. Louis Research Community, and in addition, students are presented information about the process of applying to colleges and universities around the country and participate in a number of social events, such as the St. Louis Cardinal Baseball Game. On July 22nd, all 101 students presented their research findings to an audience of their peers, research scientists, parents, friends, and having successfully completed the requirements for graduation from the program, they were presented their laboratory coats, Stars pins, graduation certificates, and were commended Stars Research Scholars in a ceremony on the University of Missouri-St. Louis campus. Academically, the participants were a very select group, and I don't remember so many qualified applications for the Stars Program. All student research papers were reviewed and judged anonymously using the following criteria: the difficulty and complexity of the research, the appropriateness of the research methodology, findings, quality of writing, and overall quality of the research project. And in addition, each reviewer assigned points to eight critical components of the research paper in order to quantify the evaluation assessment. And it's with great pride and pleasure that I'm here this evening to present the Stars Award for Excellence in Research to six outstanding Parkway seniors. They are Bushra Ahmed. I think Aditya Gokhale is not here this evening. The award reads as follows: Students and teachers as research scientists in recognition of outstanding research accomplishments during the 2016 Stars Program. The Partnership of Research Institution presents this award of excellence to--and each of the names are highlighted--and it's signed by the senior officers of the five research institutions. So, congratulations to these young, outstanding student scientists. And lastly, I want to congratulate the Parkway School District, its faculty and staff for the outstanding academic programs that provide the quality background that helps students like these win very, very competitive research awards. Thank you all very much.
We want to thank all of our students, their families, and our Parkway staff for joining us this evening to celebrate the accomplishments of these wonderful students. And we would say to you, parents, you have outstanding children, and you should be very proud of them, and we know you are. We are honored that we've had you here with us tonight. We will continue. 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. Yeah, we'll give you a few minutes. We know the exciting part is yet to come. Thank you again. Patrice, what are you doing to your wall again? What are you doing?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
What time?
Nine thirty.
All right, I'm going to be there because I want to see that wall. Be in a bit, but I'm excited. Nine fifteen, so I need to get there by nine. Okay, all right, thank you. Tomorrow or Friday? There's on Friday, yes. I'm glad you did. Thank you, Patrice. Wow, that cleaned up pretty good.
One of my favorites. I got to work with him here, then I got to work with him there.
His name's--well, his name is Shank.
He's a teacher.
No, I knew him at my bridge, but he was one of his students when this was-- Now for the exciting stuff. 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. 6.01, addition to the agenda, to Agenda Item 11.04, approval of personnel items. 6.02, update to Agenda, Item 11.13, approval of purchase of appraisal services. 7.0, citizen statements. If you would give your name and address, we'd appreciate it. This would be Bradley Harmon. There he comes. That's all we got.
Thank you very much. To the board, over to Dr. Marty. My name is Bradley Harmon.
Oh, wow, I'm loud. I'm president of Local 6355, the Communications Workers of America. I've been here before. I'm proud to represent, support staff, employees who work for the Parkway School District. I've got written material that we prepared for you today that I'll leave a copy of that you guys can review. I'm here on a personnel matter, and I don't want to go into, in a public forum, the particular details of personnel matter that we're going through. What I do want to say is that the contributions that CWA-represented employees make to Parkway are significant. They're proud to work in one of the best school districts in the country. The hard work that they do plays a real role in this being a great school district. CWA-represented employees are role models to Parkway students each and every day by showing up and doing a hard job and doing it seriously and with respect, and that's something that students in any school, and especially in Parkway, need to learn. It fits with the values of this district. We believe that it is appropriate to hold you as the-- We believe that it is appropriate to hold you as the elected representatives of this district to a high standard for treating the employees of the district with respect and fairness. We're disappointed with the action that the board has apparently taken with regard to two of the members that we represent. We discussed that with you last month. I have written material that you can review more closely. We want to have a productive and constructive relationship with the board. You will be seeing union members at board meetings on a regular basis, and we look forward to working with you on a proactive way to educate you about the concerns of important stakeholders in the Parkway community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to reviewing those materials and responding to you in writing. Thank you, Bradley. 8.0, approval of agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for November 9th, 2016?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. 10.0, communications, calendar of meetings. Our next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, November 30th, 2016, at 7:00 PM at Central Middle. We anticipate a closed meeting will be held at 6:00 PM that night. 10.02, board liaison reports. Would anyone like to, we're gonna start with Beth.
I get to start. Yesterday, all of the employees, employees of Parkway along with four members of the school board and many local partners had the pleasure of coming together at the Family Arena in St. Charles to see a wonderful program and hear a wonderful presentation from Doc, from almost Dr. Manny Scott. I think it is a presentation that I learned a lot from and has probably changed me for a very, very long time. And I'm so proud of Parkway bringing these kinds of programs to our, to our community. I think it's outstanding, and I thank the committee that put so much hard work into organizing it, except for a little traffic problem that had nothing to do with the planning. It was just flawless. It was wonderful, and I really, really appreciate everything that you all did to bring that program to us.
Ditto. And the topic, the theme for the day was caring and Parkway cares, and it was a beautiful theme. And I, I could not believe Manny Scott spoke for, what, an hour, which is an hour and 20 minutes? Almost 3,000 people in this arena. I heard not one cellphone go off. I heard not one person talk to one another. It was, you could hear a pin drop. It was, he had our attention. It was a beautiful message. It was very moving. I couldn't believe it. And I have a little personal story that I witnessed about how Parkway cares. Before the, before the, before it started, there were a number of ladies lined up to get into the ladies' bathroom, as they do, and people started coming out of the stalls and they said, "There's no toilet paper. There's no toilet paper." So, so the women organized and started bringing toilet paper to other ladies, and, and it was just really, I thought this is a perfect thing to happen today because everyone was, was trying to help one another. And then the lady came in with reinforcements and everything worked out.
TMI.
No, it was, it was really funny. It just really was. It fit the theme. We care.
It was nice. Any other board lead? I'm sorry, Dr. Marty.
I could just add to that. For Manny Scott, at the end of the program, he hung around and talked to people, signed some books, and a lot of people wanted to talk to him. And I was one of the last people that had a chance. And I had heard Mr. Scott last year at a conference, and I said to him, I said, "You were good last year, but you were so much, you know, better today." Maybe it was because I was sitting to him, I saw that emotion. But he also said that, he said, "I just have to tell you, Dr. Marty, I, I get a sense pretty quickly when I step onto the stage what audience I'm speaking to." And he said, "I immediately had a warm sense about the people here, your staff, that everybody was really, was engaged." And he said, "The fact you had everybody here, your whole staff," so I could speak to not just teachers, but all the staff was really meaningful to him. He said, "He said, 'You saw the best in me today because you were at your best.'" So I thought that was a great compliment to, to our Parkway and brought another cheer to my eye. I had plenty, many tears through the program. I know Beth did too.
I was kind of kidding. I said that, Doctor, I was sitting next to Dr. Marty and I said I heard him sobbing and then I realized it was me. Very moving, very, I mean, so many messages to take away from, from what he was saying. And, and, you know, there's kids like that in Parkway and throughout our community that you just hope you don't miss. Because you look at what he became, if any of our kids could become half what he's done, we'd be so proud of them. And that's what we hope for. That's why we talk about all. And he sure made us, made us think about that and what good things can happen. Any other?
Yeah, I just want to say, the experience of getting the entire Parkway faculty and staff and administrators together is amazing. We were up in the front row and when you turn around and you saw the mass of, of our faculty and, and the personnel in Parkway and, and the excitement of everyone as they came in, the communications, the excitement of talking to one another, greeting one another after not seeing one another for quite a while. It's an amazing, amazing experience to see everyone in Parkway because, you know, we're, we go to schools and we see people from time to time, but you never see everyone together. And to have this experience, Dr. Marty, after four years, it was a fantastic experience. One of the things I thought was so impressionable about Manny was the fact that at the very end, he said, "I'm not an exception." He said, "I am not an exception." Every one of the students in that particular class are achievers and did very well in life in one respect or another. They all accomplished a lot and they made it. And that says an awful lot. And he said, "Don't look at me as an exception." He said, "There's a lot of exceptions out there of young people who are given an opportunity or taken and nurtured, and what they become is amazing." So we really appreciate the experience.
Unfortunately, I was taking too many of those. But just to prove how our kids are caring, I heard about a story at the West football game last weekend, or last Friday night. The, a group of West students had just bought the last pack of Skittles. You've, you've heard this. The last pack of Skittles, and there was a little girl that wanted Skittles real bad. And she started crying and was real sad. The kids gave her that bag of Skittles. They were from the opposing team, and the smile on her face was just well worth it. So our kids are caring, even if it's the little things like that, they're very caring. They are learning, they're doing it, and I just thought that was awesome. A little bag of Skittles. But I think the family even said something about, you know, "We were, you know, not looking forward to the competitive, you know, football game here, but you guys are really nice." Thought I'd share that.
And I, I will share that it's been a very busy fall in Parkway. We've seen a lot of craft fairs that our marching bands have been conducted. The students are out there, they're helping to set up after school, they're, they're tearing down, they're working the concession stands, they're, they're out there doing fundraising for their group, and they're competing. And these marching bands are out there at these competitions and they're traveling. These kids are spending a lot of time in their extracurricular activity, practicing after school, and I'm just so proud of our marching band students and, and the effort that they put in and as a team and going out there and supporting one another. And then also attending trunk or treats at some of the elementary schools. And it was so fun, the Friday night before Halloween, to be at a trunk or treat outside with all the little kids, you know, opposite from the high school kids, but now we're with the little guys and babies and parents dancing with their kids and kids dancing with each other and just really enjoying each other's company. And, you know, it's just so refreshing right now to see this coming together of our community with everything that's been going on within Parkway and within the country right now, to see that togetherness and everybody having fun and participating and making this such a great place. It really made me very proud to be part of Parkway, even rolling a bunch of cake balls for lollipops to sell at a craft of a fundraiser. But it was fun because you know you're making a contribution and, and you're doing something good and seeing the kids involved and the parents involved and the teachers involved and everybody working together. It was just, just very heartwarming.
Thank you very much. Kim and I also attended earlier a all-district, Parkway all-district choir. And what a fabulous night that was. Jeff Lackey does a tremendous job, and it was just wonderful to, it would have been a great evening just to hear the middle school, who were very good, but then when those high schoolers who came together from each one of the high schools to sing. It was night and day, and they were so good, and they had guest conductors, and they're on a great podium, not podium, but stage there at Anseul. It was really wonderful and always worth the time to listen and just see again some of the talents that our kids have that are just, go beyond. I mean, they're, they're wonderful. We saw tonight with all the intellect that they have, but they have great voices that could touch you too. So that was a, that was a fun event. Okay.
I just want to add one other thing. Dr. Watson, periodically we get to meet with her. Kim and Debbie and I met with her recently, and I just want to say thank you, Dr. Watson. She's always very well-prepared. She asks, you know, "What do you want to talk about? What do you want to hear about?" So we always give her suggestions, and we talked about character education this last time, but she's always very well-prepared. And it's at the end of the day, when she could be going home, but she spends an hour and a half, maybe two hours with us, and we appreciate it so much. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, let me remind, on the 14th of November, at 6:30 PM at West High School, we'll have our Project Parkway quarterly meeting, so we invite you to be part of that. I'm not sure what the theme is for that night.
It's focused, something we heard on our Lucy tour last year that we're trying to pick off a serious topic. Several of our staff members have had experience, experience doing some travel to foreign lands and doing some studying and doing some research, and so they're going to share some of the perspective of global education and hopefully engage us in what Parkway could do to perhaps, you know, make our students much more aware of the larger world out there and how they can, how we can integrate that into our curriculum, but it's certainly integrate into our future as we think about the ever-changing world, and our children are obviously going to experience more, more global opportunities.
The world just gets smaller. Thank you. November 14th at 6:30 PM at West High School. And also then on November 15th payday, at 4:15 PM, the TLA Subcommittee Meeting at ISC. Action items, 11.0. May I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented in the November 9th, 2016 board materials?
So moved.
Second. Is there anything to be pulled to action or to be closed? If not, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Action items, there are none. Policy review, there are none. Reports, 14.01, achievement report. Kevin Beckner, our coordinator of student assessment, will assist us in following him. We'll call on Dr. Lisa Meredith to talk to us about Goal One.
President Jacob, Vice President Sorentino, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, thanks so much for the opportunity to present our annual achievement report tonight. And if I have a little extra spry in my step tonight, it's because I got to spend Monday with our Parkway Central High Speech and Debate Team, talking to them about data and hearing how they're using information and their projects, and was reminded about several things in working with them. First, data does not give us answers, but leads us to better questions. And hearing the kinds of things they were debating and talking about and how they were using information and getting to talk about going beneath the surface really reminded me that we're going to have a lot of questions about what we need to do and how we need to move forward and things like that. The second thing that I was reminded of in getting to talk with them is that really data is part of our story. And the story of Parkway's achievement in this report is that our achievement remains strong and we have a lot of work still to do. And that's both happening at the same time. There's lots to celebrate, but there are also things that we certainly need to work on and things we need to focus on to move forward. As we go through this report, we'll be looking at five different areas. We'll be looking at our state assessments, subgroup achievement, college and career readiness, which will deal with many of our ACT, AP, dual-credit type things, and also our graduation rate and our attendance rate, with all of that happening within the context of our mission and vision. I'd also caveat, we heard lots of great things from our principals tonight about the amazing people our students are, not just their scores and the things that they've done. So we also know that our data doesn't capture everything that we value, that there's a lot of things we care about that are really important to us. Those things might not show up in our test scores, but we know we need to be paying attention to those as well, and I think we'll hear more about that in the Goal One report next as well. So with that, let's begin. And we will look first at some of our state test scores. I'm going to keep hitting it until it flips to the next slide. I'm going to do them all behind my back, up top.
Nice clothes.
Every way, which I'm going to turn to them and say, "What's up? You guys appear to be in Google Slides. You need to go to the PowerPoint version that Taylor downloaded. Hey, we're back. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it. So we're going to begin with our MAP performance. What you're going to see is this is English, and I want to point out a couple of things here. What we see on the left is the state scores over the last five years, on the right, the Parkway scores over the last five years. So what we notice is that Parkway score, Parkway student scores remain much higher than the state, but there are two other things I want to point out on here as well. First, we do use a measure called MAP Performance Index, which can be a little weird and not necessarily intuitive, but want to make sure we understand what we're looking at. When we look at just what percent of students scored proficient or advanced, that doesn't tell us whether they scored proficient or advanced, and we do care about that. So the MAP Performance Index takes that into account by awarding points for each achievement level. Five points for students who are advanced, four for proficient, three for basic, and one for below basic. You add up your points, divide by the number of students, you get this number. The easiest thing to keep in mind is the even numbers. So if your MPI were 400, that would mean the average student in your school, in your school scored proficient. So that's a good number to keep in mind. Just that 400 would mean, on average, the average student would have scored proficient in your school. The second thing I want to point out is that in both English and math, we get to have new tests very frequently, and this again was a year where we had new tests in English and math. What that means is we can't directly compare the scores from year to year. That's why you see them in different colors here, because they can't be directly compared to any years that came before. But whether that's in English, as in here, math, as in here, we see the Parkway scores from our students remain much higher than the state average. We can in science and social studies compare year to year because those tests have remained consistent, and in both of those content areas, we also see that Parkway student scores remain strong and well above the state average. We also know that beyond just our, all of our math scores, we can look at our high school and of course exams with our English and math tests. They did change last year, so we can't compare two years of scores, but not necessarily beyond that. We do see for our Algebra I scores, they did increase slightly over the prior year. We also see the same in our biology scores, a slight increase from year to year. Biology scores did increase by a few points. Our only EOC where we dropped just slightly and it was pretty close was our government scores, and we'll look a little closer at that in a moment about why that might have been. So now let's look at our subgroup achievement, because we can't just look at the overall achievement. We have to dig into how some of our other groups are doing, not just the overall, to make sure that we are in fact meeting all, or at least getting closer to that. The first thing we'll look at is gender. We do want to see how our male students, female students, how they are faring. What we see is that very, very close in social studies, our females are outperforming our males in science. We do see one rather large gap that has remained, and you've seen this last year and in prior years as well, and that's in English Language Arts. We actually see quite a large gap between our male students' performance and our female students' performance. That's something we continue to look at and watch. Our math scores are almost indistinguishable with our male students and female students performing at roughly the same level. Next, we're going to look at the state subgroup, and the state subgroup, also sometimes called the gap group or the super subgroup, includes any of the students who fall into any of these groups. So students who identify as either Hispanic or African-American, students with IEPs, students who receive free or reduced-priced lunch, or students who are English learners. Doesn't matter if you fall into four of those groups or one of those groups. If you fall into any of them, you're in the subgroup. And this is where I pointed out that we have work to do, because when we look at students who fall into that subgroup versus students who don't, this is where we see quite a difference. Here, we have in English, our students who are in the subgroup, students who aren't. And we noticed that we have quite the achievement gap between those two groups. This is English. We see the same in math. We see the same in science. We see the same in social studies. While our overall scores remain quite high, we do see this persistent While our overall scores remain quite high, we do see this persistent achievement gap, and that's something that we certainly need to work on so that we can make sure we're really meeting our mission for all of our students and getting them to achieve at a high level. We also know that this isn't a Parkway problem alone. This is also a problem for virtually every district and certainly holds true throughout the state. Though we can't take solace in this chart, we should at least know we're not alone. What we see here is those are the statewide subgroup scores, and here we have our Parkway student scores in blue above that. So our Parkway students who fall into that subgroup are outperforming comparable peers throughout the state and doing so consistently over time. Unfortunately, all of those scores, both at the state level and at the Parkway level, fall below the state target, and that's something we certainly need to pay close attention to if we want to remain a high-achieving district and one where our students are all successful. Now we'll turn to college and career readiness, looking at our ACT scores, our AP scores, and dual credit. Here we see our graduate composite. This is the student's most recent test. So the ACT, the last one they took, whether they took it one time or six times, it would be the last time they took it. And we do know that Parkway students achieved the highest graduate score since 2011, since we started giving the test to all students. We also notice, and you can see here, that the state dropped quite a bit this year, as did the nation. That is in, that is due to all students being tested. For those of you who remember back in 2011, we started doing that in Parkway, we experienced a half-point drop in Parkway across the state. You can see it was a point and a half decline in that score. And as more states begin requiring all students to take it, we see a corresponding drop in that national score. That's expected when we bring in students who were not choosing to take it, but who want to provide that opportunity. We do see that decline. We have a very busy chart here, but we do see that 23.3 at the top, that's our senior composite, our graduate composite. But we can also look at the other tests in our ACT series to let us know how we're doing. So we see that orange is our junior, our statewide ACT. We also have in this data our PLAN, which has been retired and we can no longer give because ACT is no longer offering it, also our EXPLOR scores. One thing to point out here is that we continue to watch how our juniors are doing that one time. We know kids will take it additional times, many of them after that. Our current senior class who took it as juniors actually scored a higher composite than the previous class. That would lead us to believe that we hopefully will, if that trend continues, see another positive ACT composite score from our graduate class next year. I'd also point out on the right, we are starting, because ACT has retired those assessments to give the practice ACT to our sophomores and our freshmen. So this will be a data point that we'll begin watching and comparing to our junior scores, our senior scores. We really want to provide students that opportunity to experience it more than once, and that's based in large part on this next chart that you're going to see. So what we have here is, you as a board have asked in previous years, how many times do our kids take it and things like that? And what we see is this chart, where if we group them together, that first bar, that's 33% of our students, they take the ACT only one time, only the time that it's offered as juniors. The remaining 67% fall into the groups on the right, where they take it multiple times, some students up to 10, which is a lot. We also look at though, how did these different groups score? And this is where we see an area where we can really improve, because when we look at the composite scores of these groups, we see that the group of students who take the ACT only once score below a 20 as a group. One of our goals in our current strategic plan is that all students will score at or above the national average. That's one of our goals, in addition to our composite rising. And this is something we can certainly work on, and that's part of how the practice ACT plays into that, is giving students who might only take it the one time, experience in seeing the type of test, how it's timed, how it works, what the questions are like, all prior to actually taking it that one time when they're a junior. We also know that we still have work to do in terms of all of our subgroups as well, because just like with our state scores, we do see an achievement gap among our different groups of students who take the ACT. Unfortunately, not all of our groups are experiencing the same level of performance on the ACT. ACT has a different measure, though, that we also want to make sure we're looking at, and that's what they call the college readiness benchmarks. On the college readiness benchmarks, they have in each subtest a score that says, "If you reach this score, you're very likely to be successful in a college class." That's what it is. And so we really want to look at what percent of students are meeting that, and particularly who are meeting that score in all four content areas, reading, English, science, and math. What we've seen this past year is that 42% of Parkway students met all four of those benchmarks. That is consistent with where we've been in prior years. You also might notice that large statewide drop for Missouri graduates, that's corresponding again to what we saw with the composite score dropping. But this is one we want to make sure we're paying attention to as well, not just achieving a composite, a high composite score, but also meeting all of those benchmarks. You could achieve a solid score, say a 25, but maybe you scored a 21 in English, and you would not meet that benchmark. We want to make sure our students are ready and prepared in all content areas when they go off to their next steps. In terms of AP exams, here are the bottom-line numbers with our AP exams, and there's some big numbers. Over 1,000 students took an AP exam last year in Parkway, with over 2,000 tests taken, 81% of those resulting in a score of three or higher. And the trend lines are quite impressive this year, and this would be one of those celebrations, where we saw a 15% increase this year in the number of students taking an AP exam, and almost a 20% increase in the number of tests taken last year. So AP participation is certainly on the rise, and has been for a number of years, but this last class certainly saw quite, quite a jump in AP test performance.
Kevin, I don't want to, but since we're on that slide, what's the significance of a three or four? Maybe our audience would...
Sure, a three, four, or five is what is called a qualifying score, and that's typically what colleges will accept for credit when they try to transfer in that AP class to their college. So we want to make sure our students are going through the work to take an AP class, and they're going through all the rigor that's involved with that, that they're actually meeting that score. We also, and I'll point out with that, Dr. Marty, back to this one, 81% of our scores still at that level while we're increasing the number of participants is very solid. We obviously want that to be at 100, but we know that there's probably also at least a temporary trade-off for when we have more and more students participating. We might be encouraging more students who would not have previously taken one of those exams to take one, and maybe those students struggle the first time they do that. Over the long term, we want to increase both. We want more students participating and more students achieving a score of three or higher, both at the same time. We know that there's also dual credit opportunities for our students, where they can earn college credit through their coursework in high school. And we do have, and this has been consistent for several years, a very large number of our students participating in at least one dual credit course. In fact, 72% of Parkway students, at one point, either between their sophomore, junior, or senior year, participate in a dual credit course. Many of those students are successful, with over 60% of our graduates actually earning the college credit, obviously saving their families lots of time and financial resources by being able to transfer those credits that they've earned in high school. And finally, we will turn to our other two indicators, our attendance and our graduation rate. In terms of attendance, the state measures what percent of students were here 90% of the time. So not averaging everyone's attendance together, but actually looking, did Mrs. Hopper attend 90% of the time? Did Mrs. Applebaum attend 90% of the time? And here we have some encouraging news as well, and that's that our attendance rate climbed this past year, all the way up to 93% of Parkway students attending 90% of the time. You can see where it's been in prior years, we did see a little bit of an increase. I know, and I'm sure you are all aware, the diligence of our principals and counseling teams really following up with many of those students that we could say likely led to part of that increase. In terms of our four-year graduation rate and our five- and six-year graduation rate, I actually have an update to report that's different than the materials you have. We're constantly updating when we find out that maybe a student has graduated, and maybe previously they didn't graduate at the end of the school year, but they finished over the summer, or they entered a program, or they transferred somewhere else. In the materials you received, that number was closer to 90.5%. However, with the update, that's actually up to 93%, 93.3 to be exact, with our four- and five-year graduation rates even higher than that. And with that, we've now looked at our state assessments, our subgroup achievement, our graduation rate, our attendance rate, and our college and career assessments, but data leads us to ask more questions, so I'll ask, what questions do you have?
Kevin, since we no longer have EXPLOR and PLAN, is there anything to take its place at the elementary and middle school?
We are using a test called the ASPIRE from ACT with our eighth graders. We're using the interim version of the test that doesn't give us a composite score, but actually even just today, I was talking with Dr. Tyson about aligning those scores with some of our other data points, so that we can use that more consistently. We tried, the first year that ACT discontinued those tests, we tried giving the ASPIRE summative exam, which is another ACT, it's just a different version of what we are using. We found that we did not get useful information from that. We weren't able to really use it to help students. It was very slow, and the process frankly was not worth the time and resources we were putting into it. So we only did that for one year, last year switching over to the interim exam. So that's another one that we can start including, once we really get a sense of how well that data aligned to some of the other things.
Okay. Any other questions? Beth?
Kevin, great report. Thank you for all that information, and congratulations to our educators for bringing our kids along to where they need to be. So my question is, is strategies for taking the ACT. If kids are taking a practice test in ninth grade and a practice test in 10th grade, how are they understanding what they could do better? Not specifically teaching to the test, but we all know that if they have good strategies, they tend to do a lot better in the tests.
Sure, and there's several things going on on that front. We did provide all of our teachers with a detailed item analysis, so they could actually look not just, what was their overall score, but where did our students perhaps struggle? And that's grouped even, say, in math by. We saw that, for example, statistics, students did not do as well on statistics as they did on some of the other things. We know that in science, it's not content-heavy, but it really is about understanding data, being able to make inference, being able to do things like that. Our teachers are really looking at that and starting to include some of that in their coursework. I know that the high school coordinators have had those conversations with their teachers about embedding that. Just last week during the development, actually Central High's early release day, they had sessions around embedding the ACT in coursework. Additionally, we know that we have multiple after-school and even Saturday opportunities at some schools to explicitly teach some of the ACT test-taking skills, strategies, and content, and each of our schools have a program like that. Central High is actually the first one to take on a Saturday program for some of those students who might have after-school commitments and activities and things like that. So we, we have several things going on to try to encourage that. Additionally, when they get their reports, they don't, the reports the students get don't necessarily highlight their score, but the strategies that they need to focus on, even as, as basic as, "You left things blank, and that is bad. You should not leave anything blank, and that is a strategy that you need," and things like that. So that we can help them just think through, in addition to, we need to learn the content, we need to also know on particular tests like this, what are the things that might be different? What do we need to, read the questions first, or read the, I'm sorry, read the answer choices first, before you read the passage. Really look at, on all those charts and graphs, all the, how are the axes set up? What are the titles and what are the captions? All those things that we know are good test-taking strategies. We have several things in place to try to encourage that, both outside the class through those supplemental means, but also trying to embed that actually in some of the coursework, where it would tie nicely with what teachers are already doing.
Okay, that was question number one. And question number two, with the rise in students that are taking the AP exams, are we tracking to see if our gap group kids are part of that increase in numbers?
Not to the rate that we would like, for sure. We still have quite a bit of disproportionality, right? We still have our groups who are typically underrepresented are typically underrepresented, but our high schools, each of them has signed on to equal-opportunity schools, which I know as a board you all have heard about, with the explicit intent to try to increase our students who might not engage in the most rigorous coursework to engage in AP courses and to engage in rigorous coursework. So that's something we're certainly keeping an eye on, but it was, it was basically both groups who were participating, that increase was shared, but we know that we started at a really disproportional baseline, and so that did not really increase with the...
It really didn't.
It stayed basically the same.
Okay. The last question is, is do we track how many college credits our students graduate from Parkway with?
That is a great question that I don't know the answer to. I do not track it, but I will actually see if Dr. Tyson can answer that. I don't know if he's here, but that might be, he's not.
Okay, so...
But I'd be happy to look into that and see if we can get that for you.
So, I was asked this question a week or two ago by my college sophomore, who was a Central High graduate, and she went into college as a sophomore because of the vast number of dual-credit courses she had the opportunity to take at Central High, whereas her friend who's the North High graduate said, "I didn't have that opportunity." So, you know, that, what do kids know? Did you really not have the opportunity, or did you not know that you had it, or whatever? So I'm curious if we're offering the same opportunities across the board in our high schools for college credit.
That's a great question. I'd be happy to look into that and get you that information, presuming it's available.
Yeah, it might not be.
Correct.
Well, that's the question I...
Right, because I mean, the kids, they sign up through their teacher, I think. The teacher gives them the forms, and then they, the parents sign them, they send in the money, and they turn the teacher, they turn the forms back to the teacher who presents them to the college, or whoever's offering the credit. But I think some kids drop. You know, I don't know that they go all the way through. Sometimes that circumvents the teacher and goes directly to the college.
Sometimes. We do, each of our schools submits to the state through our data process. The students who we do know and are aware of, who've gone through all that, we submit to them. Here's the students who have taken a course, here's the grade they got in that course, because we know typically a qualifying score is an A or a B in that class, in order to get the credit. And then the state reports back to us what percent of kids participated and what percent of kids we reported getting an A or B in that class. But to your point, then someone might have gone around, you know, that system where we might not have the information, but we'll do our best to find that for you.
Right, thank you.
And I will say, we've put a much bigger emphasis on that over my time on the board. I think Mr. Powers would be proud that we're tracking it and that the high percentage of kids that are taking it, but I still think we have some work to do. But what a great opportunity for kids and for their parents, honestly.
As a Parkway Central graduate, I went into college with 24 credits.
Wow.
And helped me get out a full semester early. And so there's a very real impact for many of our students.
One question I have about for future reports, when we're looking at ACT, if we could be provided the national statistics on the outcomes within the report here?
Sure.
I actually looked that up on my own, so that I could kind of, because we know that our students are not competing for seats at colleges and universities, just with other Missouri students.
Certainly.
They are competing globally. So I think if we could see how we're being tracked against those national statistics would be very helpful.
Certainly, thank you.
My question, though, also is for our achievement gap. What are we doing? What is the plan? And I really feel compelled to challenge the district on coming up with a plan for this. We hear every year, we have an achievement gap, we know we need it, and every year it doesn't seem to be getting closed. What's our plan of action here?
Sure, I can tell you some things are already in place, and then I might turn over to Dr. Meredith to talk about things that maybe I'm not even aware of from other curriculum areas. We know that we committed as a district to our PLC work in large part to try to identify student needs and try to identify how we help students, with one of those questions being, what do we do when students aren't learning? And that's particularly the case for many of the students who fall into those subgroups. And we know that we continue to have work to do to make sure we're doing that with fidelity, that we're, that we have assessment and scores that we can look at to make sure that we're tracking on an ongoing basis, not just after all the learning's over, whether or not students are learning, so that we can help really move that forward. We know that we have lots of schools going through social justice training as full staff to try to make sure our mental models are such so we can support student learning. We've had a lot of work around culturally responsive teaching and how to support students who might learn differently than other people might learn. Those are some general things that I would, that I would speak to. I will try to turn it over to Dr. Meredith, see if there are other pieces that I might be missing, or maybe potentially Dr. Watson as well.
I have my own question.
Thank you.
Good evening. Debbie, that's a great question, and it is something we talk about and work with teachers and buildings and administrators and families on a regular basis. So Kevin mentioned several of our initiatives that we're working on, I think to parallel along with the PLC process. Kevin talked about this a little bit, but our improved practices of grading and feedback, where we are giving feedback to students and families on the standards, on the outcomes, as opposed to just a letter grade or a percentage, but what is it that you need to grow on? So Kevin's been doing a lot of development along with the coordinators, with teachers. Each building is also required to complete a diversity and action plan for their building based on what they know about their buildings and their students. And so each building has a plan of what they're doing in their building, and oftentimes that includes some of the things that Kevin talked about, the social justice training for the building. justice training for the building, identifying students who are underachieving and getting them a personal mentor within the building to work with them. We also, Dr. Watson's team has been doing a lot of work with our staff on trauma-informed care. One of the things whenever we look at students who aren't yet achieving is really getting at the root cause of why are they not yet achieving. It could be academic gaps, it could be social-emotional, it could be attendance. We have to really study each individual student. And so, that trauma-informed care might lead us to engaging in another, another place. We also, John Barrow, who is not able to be here this evening, I don't believe, he has been doing some analysis of our reading intervention programs and looking at which reading intervention programs have been producing gains compared to others. He shared the preliminary data with me a week or so ago, and he was working with, to get the data cleaned up a little bit. He will be doing the same thing with our ESOL program so that we can look and see which interventions are truly having an impact. So, then we can make decisions on which interventions we need to increase, or do we need to look for some other interventions. Out of the math program evaluation that you heard last year or the year before, one of the recommendations was a math, to look at the achievement gap in math. And the first action was to work on our core curriculum and classroom instruction and get that shored up. That work has happened, and with your approval of a new instructional resource with more differentiation in it that is being implemented this year within our curriculum, that will, we are hopeful that that will have an impact. But the group that is studying math intervention actually launched, was it last week? They had their first meeting, and that is a K-12 team of teachers and administrators that are studying our students who aren't yet achieving at math, and what do we need to do to support them. The other piece that you guys have been supporting us with is our engagement initiative. Another reason students might not be achieving in classes is if they are not finding themselves in the classroom, if they're not relevant, or if they're evading the learning for a particular reason. So, the work that we've been doing the last couple of June, in June, the last couple of years, to train our teachers on instructional strategies that ensure all students are engaged, where students, it's less likely that students can hide in the learning environment. Some students get very good at hiding in the learning environment. And so, we're empowering our teachers to be more skilled at designing instructional practices in the classroom where that can't happen as easily. So, it's a complicated question, and because it's a complicated question, there's a lot of moving pieces to support because what one student who isn't yet achieving needs is different than what another student needs. And so, how do you bring all of those pieces together?
And is there conversation for the students with IEPs, for example, with the special school district, and collaborating with them on that? Because that, that group keeps coming up.
Yes, absolutely. So, we have the Special Education Action Team, and that is part of the work that they've been working with over the last couple of years. Also, the coordinators have been working, the curriculum coordinators have been working with the special school district area coordinators over the last couple of years, to look even at our course offerings. Sometimes, what we found is our course offerings were, for students with disabilities, were unintentionally holding students back. And so, we redesigned, was it the math courses, Jenny, to where it is more about the competencies, and students can move at a quicker rate and move in and out of those courses. And they are now beginning to look at the English Language Arts ones as well. We are also doing more work. Bobby Zigrang has been working with Amy Gurken Coats to see how we can combine our professional development opportunities for special educators and general educators, so they're learning side by side, so that our special educators are as knowledgeable of the Parkway curriculum as our general educators. That becomes tricky because they have development they need to do as well, but that is a piece of what we'll be doing. Another thing that will be coming up, it's not in place as fully as we want it now, but we will be looking more at training for our teachers around dyslexia with the new state statute that will go in place. There's a study team this year, and then either next year or the following year, depending on what this study team comes up with, we'll have a screening process for dyslexia. But we will also be required to provide development for our teachers. So, we're doing some study now around, you know, understanding more about supporting students with dyslexia within an educational setting as compared to a clinical setting. You know, we can't do what is done in a clinical setting. We don't have that skill set, nor do we have the infrastructure or resources to do that. But we can certainly support that. And so, that will be an additional piece that we'll be looking at as we learn more from the state task force that is studying that. And they will give us guidance of what we'll need to do. Okay?
Dr. Meredith, can you talk a little bit about the EOS, the Equal Opportunity Schools? Where are we with that?
Great. So, that is actually another high initiative that we are working on right now. So, with what has transpired so far this year is Janay Landis, who is our liaison with Equal Opportunity Schools, who will be coaching each of our head principals in the process, has been to Parkway once. She'll be returning next week, actually. Since her last visit, all of our high school students have taken the survey, all of our staff have taken the survey. Dr. Tyson and Kevin have worked with EOS to make sure that all of our data is shared with them. Next Monday, when Janay comes, we will meet with the four high school principals. She's actually coming to SAT on Monday, Monday morning. And then we'll meet with the four high school principals, and they'll get all of their data. I'm thinking they've probably already looked at it because they all have access to the portal and can get in and look. So, through those conversations, we'll then be able to identify students that are underrepresented in AP courses, and we will begin identifying students that we want to give a special invitation, that special nudge, you know. Manny talked about the one adult who made a difference, and he had many adults, but for some of our students, they may not have had that adult who have said, "I believe in you, you can take an AP course." And so, we'll be reaching out and doing that. And then in January, we'll be enrolling additional students in AP courses for next year. After we get that enrollment set up, then each building in the spring will work on their support system, because it's not just about getting students in the AP courses, it's about ensuring that we have support systems within the building to ensure that they're successful. So, right now, we're at data collection. Our data's coming in, and we'll start identifying students.
We're looking at that.
Yes. So, what, what we do with EOS is we identify students who have not previously engaged in AP courses, who have a profile per se that would indicate that they would be successful. Their GPA, GPA is comparable to other students who have taken AP courses and have been successful. They've expressed that they have an interest based on their survey. Teachers have indicated that they would be good candidates to be in AP courses. So, they're, in the survey, it might show that the student has a strong sense of grit and perseverance and a strong mindset. So, that would be a good indication that they would be able to do well. So, there's many pieces that we look at. And the idea is, we have a target number for students on free and reduced lunch, for African-American students, for Hispanic students. We have a target number for each building of what we should try to increase in that building, to close that proportion of gap. Our long-term goal is to learn from this process and be able to apply that same process for dual-credit and for honors, because we also know that we have disproportionality in those courses as well.
Thank you.
I just like to, as you know, I got invited to be part of the school superintendents group nationwide. And so, I spent last week, three days with peers of some of the finest suburban schools in the country, which, by the way, Parkway is there when you look at our data. I can brag this a little bit when you can, but, and then, so I'm very proud when Lisa and Kevin talked about a lot of facets. It's not one thing to close the achievement gap. No Child Left Behind, and this is, we had a little presentation, exposed suburbs. Suburban schools, before No Child Left Behind could brag that they were really achieving at high levels. They were, with about 80% of their kids. So, No Child Left Behind really exposed that the 15% to 20% of the students, and many of those are gap students or, you know, students that weren't being successful. So, since 2001, suburban schools particularly had to address the achievement gaps. And some schools immediately went for the academic approach, some went for other approaches. The truth of the matter is, is we talked more and more, and Lisa really reinforced that, and Chelsea could too, you have to think about a lot of things. You can think about the academics, but you also have to think about the social-emotional. You have to think about the mentors, the experiential learning. In fact, we talked a lot about that. The more experiences we can give students, real-life experiences, is going to hook them. And then we heard that with Manny as well. So, there's just so many facets, and understanding the students, understanding their cultural needs and the relevancy, something Manny talked about too, and understanding what, you know, what's in kids' life. So, I just want to reinforce that when we talked about this, and we spent probably a good day of the conference just talking about achievement gap, Parkway's not alone in this issue. In fact, I would say that I found this would be the most engaging part for me, because I think we really are doing a lot of things that we were able to teach other, I was able to talk to others, districts, and I learned from them as well. But I think we're doing a lot of different things, which are really is the key here. Again, you can't just do the academic piece. You have to understand students. There's a social-emotional piece. It's working with parents, the larger community, getting partners, mentors. So, just to reinforce this, this issue is certainly a very complicated one, but one that requires a lot of different approaches.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. You know, another very important piece that I didn't mention, so two things I'll mention. One is also our character education standards and the work that Chelsea and her team have done around that. And that work is becoming more and more embedded within the curriculum and the classrooms. And as students continue to grow that growth mindset of themselves, we also believe that that will help close the achievement gap, because they'll be more likely to take risks. You know, our, our learning principals talk about, we need learning environments where students are able to take risks. If you don't feel comfortable, and you don't feel safe, and you don't believe in yourself, it's hard to take a risk sometimes. And so, I also really do believe that the character education work that is happening is also going to help close that achievement gap. And then one final thing, we've also, John Barrow has really made a restored effort to be in buildings more, to help with the problem-solving process. So, we developed that out of Project Parkway 1.0. So, you might remember seeing the pyramid and how we problem-solve, we identify a student, and we ask the questions and the tiers of support. And so, we looked at some of the responsibilities that we could remove from John, so that he could be in buildings, coaching a little bit more alongside teachers and administrators as they continue to refine that problem-solving process, which connects to the PLC work that Kevin talked about, because that is part of the PLC questions. So, we know that we're, we've come a long way with problem-solving to figure out the complicated, moving parts that Dr. Marty just talked about. And so, we want to continue to help our teachers and administrators sharpen their tools around that. And so, making a renewed effort to get John more into a coaching role in the buildings, helping with that.
On the progress level, there are different types of levels, like on-track, exceeding, floor. Can you explain what that means?
Chelsea has one more minute. I think she wants to add something, and then I'll address it.
Just, just one more thing. And Desi referenced John O'Leary's quote yesterday when we were with Manny, "I love you, and there's nothing you can do about it." And so, I've talked to parents who say to me, "My child went to fifth grade," and it's the first time they heard a teacher say, "I love you, I care about you, I believe in you." And that's something we have to stop, letting our kids get so far before they hear out of a teacher's voice, "That I really care about you." And so, as we continue talking about the work around character education, and we continue talking about the most important three Rs, relationships, 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 hopefully, we can change some of the mindsets about our interactions with kids and make sure that every kid that walks out of the classroom knows that that teacher loves them and cares about them, and they will advocate for them. And so, some of this work also is being infused through the work of restorative practices and the restorative circles that we see popping up in classrooms after our teachers are developed, and the teachers saying, "Wow, this really works." Restorative practices is not just about disciplining students, it's about building community and having a safe place for kids to talk and engage and share with their classroom family, their school family. And so, the more we can help kids talk and share and feel they're a part of a community, the more time they're going to spend in the classroom, which goes to looking at our data on how often kids are out of the classroom for discipline situations. And what we know is that we're doing better. As the three of you saw, which I'm still going to write that memo, when we met, you have seen that our disproportionality of African-American students who are part of the subgroup, our suspension rates are declining. And again, it's not just one thing that we're doing, it's a combination of all of them. And I don't know if we'll ever pinpoint this, 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 but if we continue on the path that we're going to help kids stay in classrooms where they learn and they feel safe and happy to be there, we'll get there, I do believe. That's what I wanted to add.
So, more numbers. The question was on the, in the appendix, on the state assessment system, and really the state accreditation system, there's different levels of performance, and some are exceeding, or are on-track, or approaching, or floor. The state and their accreditation system has three different ways that you can get your points. One is just by having high scores. If you have high scores, you're just going to get all your points because you're, you have high scores, even if your scores are lower than last year. And we have that in some cases in Parkway, where we have high scores and are going to get all of our points. However, if you don't get all your points by having really high scores, you have two other ways that you can get your points. One is called progress. Progress is basically, are the kids who are taking the test this year doing better than the kids who took the test last year, even though they might be different kids, right? So, you're not, it's not apples to apples, but it's our system is moving up. The third way is growth, which looks at kids who have two tests, so third and fourth grade, seventh and eighth grade, did those same students increase their score? And they have targets for that, but that's differentiated by school, because if you think about making progress, a school that starts really low has to move up faster to get there than a school that's already at the top. In fact, a school that's at the top can go down, and they're still going to get all their points. And so, the different levels are differentiated by school for progress and growth, because it depends where you are. For example, Parkway really does not, for example, in English, we're well above the target, so we don't have to get progress or growth points. So, we might actually go down in a given year. Our progress score would be at the floor, because it was actually lower than it was previously. I can't tell you like, here's exactly the numbers again, because it's differentiated. It's different based on where the schools start. So, those, those words are saying, are you getting all those points? Are you getting maybe six of those points, or three of those points, or zero of those points? So, it's, it's basically the state's scoring guide.
Thank you.
So, one, one thing I'm still trying to get my arms around is the idea that when the map changes, test scores go down. And so, I guess I'm still questioning, why should the test scores go down just because the questions on the test change? Is there something, are there other factors involved as to reason why we see scores go down just because the test changed? Or we teach...
Yeah, down or up. For example, we've seen like, when the biology test has changed in a given year, scores vary widely. We've seen that the last couple of years, or should I say over time, we've seen things like that. Test-making is really hard, and it's an undervalued skill. And I say that just obviously unbiased, but it's a really hard thing to do, to write a really good test. There are professionals who do this, and even they struggle with it. And so, as a result, you might have some questions that are just slightly more challenging than other questions. Some things where you find out, you know what, this batch of questions, yeah, it was more difficult than the batch of questions, even though it was supposed to be at the same standard. Maybe we worded it. Even something as simple as word choice can make a difference between, oh, more kids didn't understand that word in this grade level. It's why they do a lot of field testing and why they do a lot of research to try to make sure that it's good, but it doesn't always work perfectly. And so, sometimes we see, yes, this test was a lot harder. Some years, the test changes because the standards changed. For example, when we went to the new Missouri learning standards two years ago, we saw the math scores in the state dropped significantly, really a ton. And you see that in some of your charts. You see the state, big math drop. Well, it's measuring different things. The actual things it's measuring are different and more challenging. And so, in that case, the test score is certainly going to drop because you're, you're measuring something different. It would be like if the basketball hoop one year was eight feet and the next year it's 12, right? You're going to have a lower score in that game because the hoop's a lot higher. And so, sometimes that's what happens. And that's actually the state where we are right now. We're going to have the same tests this year as last year, and then they'll change again, because the standards are changing again. And because the standards are changing again, we'll see different scores. And we'll see that because, again, those standards might be more or less challenging than the ones that are already in place.
Okay.
Like I say, this, editorials, that's why the task force I had the pleasure to serve on is recommending another whole look at assessment and accreditation, because it's not, it's hard to... not, it's hard to understand. You know, it's, you asked very good questions and educators and a lot of parents ask the same question. And the idea of a one a year event test is really not where we'd like to go long term.
Yeah, we really want to see kids growing.
Yes.
And our system right now really encourages achievement. Like I said, our scores could go down and we still get all the points because our achievement's really high and that's great. But what we really want to see is are kids moving up? Are they changing? Are we making a difference? And I said at the beginning, this list asks more questions, not necessarily have answers and growth is a big part of that. We're really looking at achievement still. And all of our assessments once a year, they're just really measuring achievement, how are kids doing at meeting the standards? But yeah, if we need, if we really look at growth and how students are changing over time, then a one-shot deal isn't necessarily going to get us to that.
We can only hope our, our state board who has heard this and our legislature will take it out because it's time, it is time, right Kevin?
It is time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Meredith?
And Dr. Watson.
And Dr. Watson.
Before we begin, boy Kevin does an incredible job of taking a lot of data that can be complicated to understand and making it easy to understand. Kevin, thank you for that work.
So we stood before you in September and you all saw a draft of where we were based on all of the feedback from the Listening Tours. Just in case you forgot what the feedback from the Listening Tours looks like, we're passing it along. And you all engaged in a great activity providing some awesome feedback. And Desi asked me to make sure that we did an engagement activity and strategy this evening. So I'm going to think about what that might look like in a minute because I didn't have enough time to plan. So after you all gave us feedback, we then sought feedback from a number of other stakeholders. So we had September, the work session, we had feedback from the October Project Parkway Steering Committee, we had feedback from the Superintendent's Action Team, and we also had feedback from building principals. And so we took all of that feedback and we looked at some patterns to make some recommendations for some adjustments.
And so this evening we are going to share with you a few revisions that we have made after we synthesized all the feedback that Dr. Watson just talked about. We are proposing to add one measurable objective. We have revised three indicators to make them clearer. We have looked at the words all and each. And then because of the additional measurable or measurable objective, we had to change one word from five to six because it will give us six measurable objectives. So the measurable objective that we have added is the one that's on the bottom of the slide. And actually, there's a revision since we made that based on conversation at SAT earlier this week. So part of the feedback that we heard is it was in the indicators that we expected high academic achievement, but did it need to be at the level of a measurable objective? We heard that from principals, we heard that at Steering Committee, we heard that from some board members in our conversation. So we have added that sixth measurable objective which will read meet, so each student will meet or demonstrate growth towards state, we're going to take state out because state, no, we're leaving state there. Meet or demonstrate growth towards state and local academic benchmarks in all curricular areas. So we're taking out the confusing wording of within and across. So it will read meet or demonstrate growth towards state and local academic benchmarks in all curricular areas.
Thank you, Paul Tandy.
So that is similar language to what's in the indicator, but we wanted to take the feedback that we had received and raise that up to a level of a measurable objective. So we appreciated that feedback.
And what we realized is as we looked at the first five measurable objectives and we looked at the indicators, things we already measure and we will continue measuring because we believe that they are important, that we weren't, people weren't necessarily transferring the indicators of things that we're going to report out of and continuously to assess as being part of the work and helping our students be learners who are, who positively engage in an ever-changing world. And so just to be more explicit, so people don't think that that is not something that we are doing with children here in Parkway, we added that. We're talking about the indicators. So we have also revised some indicators. And so the indicator or the wording in black is the new language, which is what you have on your paper. And the words in red, that's what was on your paper when we talked in September. So based on understanding that the state of Missouri and Desi right now will not be sharing if indeed a district is accredited with distinction, Kevin has done some research for us and this may come back in a couple of years. We wanted to look at how we could look at this in a way that the state will give us information to see if we're successful. So it simply says we'll exceed 90% of points on annual performance report.
We had a lot of conversation back and forth with that one of whether or not we should have it set as a set percentage, what that percentage should be, or if we should do something like the state has done and say we'll be in the top 10%. So you know, the state goal is to be in the top 10 by 20. But if you say that you're going to be in the top 10% in the state, then your success is dependent on the success or lack of success of other districts. And really in education, we want all districts to be rising. And so that's why we, after conversation at SAT, decided to set it as an actual percent on APR. We know that that will change if the tasks force that Dr. Marty referenced a few moments ago, if they truly do redesign in MSIP 6, that could change, but we would still want to receive the highest points possible with that. We also know that with Every Student Succeeds Act, that our percentages on APR may change a little bit as well because we'll go back to reporting by individual subgroups as opposed to one gap group with Every Student Succeeds Act. And we believe that will begin in the 17, 18 school year.
The next one reads at each grade level, PK through 12, each student will exit meeting district academic benchmarks. Previously, all kindergartners, sixth graders and ninth graders will enter their new schools meeting district academic benchmarks. And boy, we had a long conversation about this. And so this was actually, as I, I see your head nodding, it was some feedback from the Project Parkway Steering Committee. And so as Lisa and I talked, we talked about all kindergartners, how are we going to know that they enter meeting those benchmarks? And we talked about the work of the preschool study and the outreach in the community with our local preschool centers and daycares. But we certainly don't know every child that's coming into us and we don't know if our hands are able to reach out to that community, that parent through the Parent and Teacher's Program. And so there were some pieces that, you know, we felt that really we didn't have any control over. Also, as we think of students moving into our school district, we really have, we don't have any control over helping them enter into a grade level. What we do have control over is helping students when they move from grade to grade level. And so that is the rationale for that indicator to change. And the last one is percent of students with school discipline incidents will decrease. And previously it read reductions in incidence of bullying and harassment. And so as we looked at why this was there, that was more of a focus on as we looked at the, the feedback in the sheets, thinking about our work around character education and some of the things that we really want to see reduce. But why just that particular standard? We want all school discipline incidents to be reduced. And so this way, we will continue monitoring our standards based on our discipline policy to see if we are doing a better job in helping kids think about choices before they make
The other revisions on the piece of paper that you received that is our current draft, we went through and really had careful conversation and consideration in the indicators of when it was each as opposed to all. And we ended up removing, Chelsea, I believe, all of the alls unless we were looking at something that was an aggregate. So percent of students with school discipline, that's not about each student, but it's looking at our district aggregate with that. So we just did a final cleanup of making sure that we used the word each when we truly wanted to look at each individual student with an indicator.
What questions do you all have?
On the graduate exit survey indicator, how do kids know when they take that exit survey if they're prepared or not?
So there are a number of questions and actually we all have an updated version to give feedback on for the graduate survey right now after Dr. Tyson and Dr. Schulte worked on it. It is specifically the questions that we ask align to mission, vision and learning principles that help us, help us look at their perspective as to whether or not they are ready for those next steps. Because if we think about our mission and what we're trying to accomplish for our students to leave us, to go out into the ever-changing world, we certainly want our students to be capable, curious, caring and confident, among the other statements that we.
Right. But if they haven't had the experience, how do they know if they're prepared or not?
When do we give the survey?
It is senior.
180 days after they've left. After they graduate. So it's six months after they've left?
Yes. It's not right when they're graduating. So they've had a little bit of transition time into their next endeavor.
Because they give feedback on the survey as a senior.
Right.
Then we also.
Kevin, to the rest.
We give all students a survey when they exit. So during their senior year that they have to do before they graduate, we use that as the baseline and then we follow up with them at 180 days, sending them the exact answers that they provided when they filled out their exit survey, asking them, is this correct? Here's what you said, is this still accurate, including all the details like the thing you're talking about, but also just, you said you were going to this school, true? Like, did you actually show up? So we follow up at that 180-day point to verify that all that's correct and they have an opportunity to change anything that they had answered.
What kind of a response rate do you expect?
Low. And that's why we've asked, you all as Board have asked before, can we follow kids after they graduate? We tried to six months after and get about, I think, a 40% response rate.
You can hold, you can hold that diploma.
You can do all kinds of things if you're willing, but that is the process to try to follow up with them. Yeah, and we struggle with the response rate for sure. We've done a lot of different things like now there's an iPad giveaway, like that's like you get entered to get an iPad, like we really are trying to follow up with them. We want to follow up with them. And those, that has moved the response rate a little bit, but it's still a struggle to find all our students.
We're bribing them, which is not what we do as we develop students' character, but I guess.
And 80 days into college.
Correct. 180 days after they leave.
Right. And I can tell you from being in meetings with other area assistant superintendents, all districts are struggling with that return rate on the 180-day survey.
I was prepared and I get to college and I see that I'm overly unprepared, I don't know that I'd be so anxious to, to answer that survey and change my answers.
That's interesting.
Honestly, I mean.
Be a little depressing.
If you're looking at what you thought versus the reality.
You should ask the parents. They were on Blackboard watching.
I'm taking notes, thank you. Give us some things to think about.
Other questions?
So this information, when will these, so I guess my question is, how will this information be reported? And is this going to be a board report annually? How are we going to keep track of this information? And then when the findings are obtained, what are we going to do if we find that the indicators are not being met?
So if you, this is the initial stage of creating our next strategic plan, which many of the things that are on our current strategic plan will roll forward, but there may be some things that we will be adding or that will have a higher priority based on what you approve in December. So Dr. Kertschoffer will bring to you at our next board meeting a final proposal, is that right, next one? For all measurable objectives and for all of the goals. And then that will be approved in December. Then we will begin working heavily in January as a district to develop that strategic plan and what will be our first action steps. And then we have not talked yet about reporting structures, but under the previous iteration of the strategic plan, if you'll remember, every year I came and reported on Goal 1 and I came and reported on Goal 2 and Chelsea came and reported on Goal 3. So we will have some kind of structure. And I also know that Desi and Paul and the team have also been looking at are there ways that we can do a better job of sharing information with the public around these indicators? We tried the dashboard and we learned a lot from that and they're looking at a new, a new system of how we can do that. And as always, strategic plan is about continuous improvement. So it is our responsibility as an organization to continually improve and respond to our data. And we can't know how we'll respond until we know what the data shows us. I'm sorry, Dr. Marty, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Would it be likely that this will be Kevin's future achievement report?
Right.
That sounds like a great idea.
And if you remember also, under the mission indicators, that's where we talked about partnering with Hanover to create the instrument where we would be doing the structured survey with a group of students. That would be something that would be added either to the achievement report or it would be a separate parallel report with that. So as we collect that data, that would again be public information that we would want to share.
And our teams have already started doing some brainstorming, but clearly we need to make sure that this is okay, you all approve it, and then we continue getting into the nitty gritty and starting over, if you will, to find out what is the best approach internally to move forward with these measurable objectives? What's the best approach to achieving the measurable objectives? And so I, we've had a lot of feedback that just because we had systems for Project Parkway 2.0, or 1.0, doesn't mean that those need to be the systems that we utilize to do the work here for Project Parkway 2.0.
Desi, do you want to add anything to that?
The only thing I would add is, and I think that's what Chelsea was alluding to, is what comes out of this will drive whatever action teams or advisories we set forward. So we'll look at that and then whatever results we have will drive action steps beyond that. So there'll be a sort of a response each year to when we get the results, what the work of the action teams become.
I think Mrs. Hopper's question is really one of accountability, right? You know, are we going to hold ourselves accountable in the board? Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call for a special meeting. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for a special meeting on November 14th, 2016, beginning at 5:00 PM at West High School for the purpose of conducting a board work session regarding a review of enrollment projections and potential impact on facilities planning. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven, zero. The next anticipated closed session will be on Wednesday, November 30th, 2016, at 6:00 PM at Central Middle School. PM at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. And finally, may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.